That's one fish bearing road.
How's Lightning Creek? I saw a picture that it jumped the bank again.
Yeah, I think it came down.
Did it?
I think it did too much damage.
I don't, I don't know how many times a force was.
You know, when they had the, when they had the big fires up there, they replaced all that stuff. But like when they replaced the bridges, since they used fire money, they cut the same size bridge. And that blew out the time before. That one didn't work. Let's put the same one back.
Wow. I have to take a grab. I don't know if you can grab.
Yes.
The road isn't more around the loop, is it?
Yeah.
It is. I thought it was still blown out down.
Six.
Down south.
Whatever that would be.
Oh, goodness sake, it's time.
He's pulling on my shirt too.
All right, time. So we've got everybody that's supposed to be here. So this time we'll call the meeting to order. It is 5:30. And today is June 4th, 2020. This is the regularly scheduled and duly advertised meeting of the Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission. Today, we are located in the first floor conference room, County Administration Building at 1500 Highway 2 Sandpoint, Idaho. And we also have online through Zoom teleconference and YouTube livestream of the meeting, if anybody's out there to participate that way. It's a little different, but that's the way things are these days. So for those of us in the room, if you would join us in pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May it be so. Okay, thank you. So let's see, we're in a different format because of social distancing. So we'll start over here across the table with the roll call, the commissioners.
Commissioner Bradish.
Commissioner Lynn Scott.
Commissioner Kempton.
Commissioner Reeve.
Commissioner Bailey.
Commissioner Glass.
From a distance and Commissioner Davis presiding. So we have a full house and a quorum therefore. And any changes in the agenda? Doesn't look like it. Okay, any announcements? Good to see everybody here tonight. So the first thing on the agenda at 5:30 is a consent agenda to look at the meeting minutes from the May 21st meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission. Have you had a chance to look at those? Pretty exciting. Any changes necessary? Okay. Then I will declare that they are complete and correct. Hit them off here. Back over there to clerk. Thank you. So that's the, that's all on our consent agenda. So also at 5:30, we have a public hearing scheduled on the agenda. Four items on that hearing docket. But first we have the proceedings for our actions. Staff report comes first. Applicant provides an overview of the project, public testimony next. Applicant, if necessary, can respond or rebut public testimony. After that, one round, it's, testimony is closed. And we deliberate the case. So first case is zone change 0002-20, zone change from rural five to rural service center. Any conflicts of interest to be notified about this one or?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Taylor is representing his client. Was the trustee, obviously. Anyway, Mr. Taylor is doing some design work for us.
Okay, anything to do with this particular case?
No.
All right then, thank you. Any other things to divulge? Well, no, from the commission, we have to see that, that nobody here has a any kind of financial, anyway. So like says up there, the first action here tonight is to get the staff report on this case. He's back there somewhere. Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Josh.
Hey, good evening. Give me just a second to get the screens in the right place. Are you seeing that? I'm not sure what you're seeing or not seeing. Okay, we are seeing what appear to be the first slide. It says June 4th, 2002. Oh. It's been a while.
It has been a while since we started this one.
Yeah, I guess. And then there's an aerial photograph shown below the zone change number. So I'll go ahead with the staff report.
Yes, sir.
Give me just a second. So tonight I'm presenting this CZ 002-20 zone change. This is a Tessar Lindstrom zone change. The applicants are requesting a zone change from rural five to rural service center. This, the project site is currently a residential home and a church is located on the corner of Highway 200 and Mariner Way. And this is just, just south of East Hope. Parcel is 1.15 acres. And the, the project, the project summary, this parcel is located at the, the east side of 217 Mariner Way. The applicant is seeking to change the current zone from rural five to rural service center. The current comp plan is designated resort community. This lot has direct access, access to Mariner Way, a paved private road. The site is serviced by a Vista Power, an individual, and an individual well. There's one home built on the existing 1.15 acre lot and a church. Hopefully you can see that, the, the church there. The applicant would like to be able to rezone the property to allow for equipment sales and service business that the current zoning does not allow for. The, the site data is, it's residential, it's unplatted, again, 1.15 acres. A lot has direct access to Mariner Way. And that is on what would be on the, on the south side of the property. The, the site does not contain any, any mapped slopes. Does not contain any mapped wetlands. And again, individual well, individual septic, it's, it's supported by, Fire District is Sam Owen and Abissa Power and, and the local school district is, is 84. So as we, as we talk about the, the current zoning, we can see that the, the red represents that resort community, which is, is prevalent there on what would be the west side of the property. The property is represented by the, by the gold arrow in the, in the photo. And the, the gold colored there is commercial. Surrounding zoning to the east is the blue, that's R5. If we look at the, at the comp plan and the the, we can see that the the comp plan lends itself to, to this zone change and that area is, is planned for this, this type of zoning. We, we did send out for agency review and sent out to Bonner County Road, a Vista Power, Bonner County Schools, Idaho Department of Air and Water Quality Idaho Department of Water Resources, Department of Lands and BNSF Railway and, and other agencies. The, the city of East Hope provided comment. And the city's comp plan does, does not match the, the county's comp plan for the area of city impact, but had no comment on the zone change. Panhandle Health had a, a comment that they did not have the, their permitting that they had on the, the existing house was a permit that dated back to 1973 and that if, if there was going to be new businesses or services that were going to impact that they're, the permitting would need to be updated. The following agents, agencies had no comment. IDL, no comment. ITD, no comment. Independent Highway, Cootney, Pondre Sewer and DEQ, no comment. We did receive some, some public comments from the surrounding businesses. Hope Marina. Rick Aluletta, I may have messed that up. And then Bob Curse Lake, neighbor, Charles and Tess Kramer at the Kramer Marina. And, and Lisa D, Lisa L. Dur at the Pandorial Shores Resort, all had letters supporting this zone change and mentioned that there was a, a real need and an demand for this, this type of business in the area. The, the staff analysis the standards and comparison for both rural five service center. It, this, this zone change does lend itself to a comprehensive plan in, and we find it to be in, in, in lines with, with the county code and the comprehensive plan. So we I would make a, make a motion to approve this, this zone change. And that's, that's all I have. I would, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Questions for staff? See. Looking for something. Okay, one thing I was going to clarify. So this is, this is, at this time, a zone change only. There's no use plan or anything like that.
Right, this is just a zone change.
This is a zone change. Okay. All right, any other questions? No questions. All right, thank you, Josh. So at this time, the applicant, applicant representative would come there, there to the podium.
Marty Taylor, Certified Land Use Planner with James A. Sewell and Associates, helping out the applicant this evening. And thanks in advance for everybody who drives into town. We're here for our March 19th, 2020 hearing. Now the 4th of June. This is effectively a boat repair, maintenance and servicing type of program that the applicant desires to do. We did a rezone in the late 1990s across the street for what is now the Hope Marine Services. The applicant was looking for commercial type zoning. I did the comp plan analysis, which we know is what state law says, new rezones are supposed to be in accordance with. And found that I couldn't support the goals and objectives of the comp plan if the property were to be petitioned for rezoning to commercial. So we put together the wish list for the applicant and all the activities that the applicant proposes actually fit in under the Rural Service Center District, which is a far lighter type of commercial district than is straight commercial. So that's the background as to how we got to that proposed designation, Rural Service Center. I'll rely on the application materials where I went to great length to walk through those standards at Bonner County Revised Code in Section 12-327. It's where you have to find whether the proposal is in accordance with what the Rural Service Center is supposed to be all about. So I'll rely on the application for that analysis. We also looked at that comprehensive plan, land use classification map, which staff had mentioned. The area is comp plan, what we call comp land. Resort community, that is the ideal classification for this kind of light commercial zoning, so that's a fit. We have had no adverse agency comments. I did reach out to Public Works when I was doing some diligence and confirmed that in fact Mariner Way is private. I also asked twice for comments from the State Transportation Department, who did not respond to either request. I just wanted to make sure if we had any highway issues and we did not. Staff noted, we did have several public comments and support the project, so we appreciate that. And then lastly, subsequent, in response to John's comment, subsequent to any site development, like building permitting, things of that nature, we'll be looking at the status of the sewer system, stormwater management, parking, landscaping, setbacks, lock coverage. What all goes into what we call is a commercial site plan for a building location permit. At this point, we know enough to support the zoning and then we can invest further in the site planning if they, we get a recommendation for approval from you and then from the commissioners, who of course have the final say. So with that, I would respectfully request a recommendation for approval to Rural Service Center based on the input from the Planning Commission. Thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, or just kind of maybe it has little to do with zoning, zone change, but Mariner Way. It serves other properties beyond this. Do you know what, we'll get to that when you have your, yeah, testimony publicly. Could you comment on that, the other?
This is the first property that's accessed off of Mariner Way. And other than that, it's just a private travel way developed within private access.
Appears there's maybe two to the north and one to the south or so.
If this project drove past other properties, it would have warranted looking into, but this is the first access off of the state highway.
Okay, thank you. Any other? Any other things, Keston? Thank you. So at this time of public testimony, so if either of you wants to come up and talk about it, go ahead, give us your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Lori Howard. I reside at 145 Mariner Way.
Ronnie Con, reside at 145 Mariner Way. I'd like to note first off, this property has already been used a couple of years, now it's in the parking of both the corporations over there. So they're already using it as their
Yeah, parking lot is clear.
And the picture of the church with the driveway going into the lot, we're neutral, we're not really against it. But that is our deeded easement and right of way goes right through the center of that property, right past the front of the house. We got a 30-foot easement.
We can show you what ours is.
So we want to make sure that's noted. It is going right past the front of that, the church building and the house, right through the center of that property. Adrian drove their well back in the day on our easement after a court battle. We didn't own the property at the time. But instead, we right of way right through the center of that property. And we want to make sure it's noted ever.
When they did the well, they, it was a court thing. We have the document here, which is what changed the access to the Mariner Way, which at that time wasn't, it wasn't called that anymore. So that's why that was granted in case we ever needed to.
Because we're all really using railroad right of way, throwing up around behind the church, been forever, but our true deeded access goes right through the center of that property.
We've never protested. Nothing's ever been developed.
But if the railroad comes along, says, ah, no, you guys can't use that, then we'll have to develop it, which we have.
And then the court thing that they had granted, it's supposed to be marked, although it hasn't been for a long time. There's certain, it says in there how, why this thing is supposed to remain clear. And I came and I went and talked with Josh Gilson. We didn't get our letter in time, but I went in and I talked with him and he told me, looked up information. Also said that our information should be with the representative as well.
Okay, while we're here, but nobody to make sure that our easement is not affected.
All right, so at the present time, you don't use that easement for access to your property. You're using railroad.
It's not a development.
So Mariner Way sits on railroad right of way.
It's an old railroad access.
But yeah, at the east end of the subject property or so.
Part of it is, yes.
Right, Mariner Way would be going right through the center of property, that's our, that's our road here. And our neighbor, right next door to the center.
Yeah, they're.
So we, you go up, off Highway 200, then you ride at the church on Mariner Way and you go past the church and
That turns into railroad.
That turns into the
Which we are using, been there forever.
Which is now called Mariner Way.
Okay, all right.
But really technically, Mariner Way goes through the center of that parking lot, past the front of the house.
Okay.
So that's just what we're here to make sure.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience care to testify? No others? So Mr. Taylor, if you want to address this, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate the input. Staff did share that information with me and just as the sewer and the parking and the stormwater, that's to be reckoned with when the site is developed. So we're aware of the access through the premises and you can't build building on top of it. So again, that's a site planning deferral, doesn't have anything to do with the reason, but we are aware of it.
Okay, that's where, yeah, that's what I was wanting to find out.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other? Okay, so that'll end the public testimony portion. Thank you for your input. And we'll deliberate this one to see what we're going to do as far as the recommendation to the county commissioners. We come, right. Commissioner Bradish, I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file ZZ 0002-20, requesting a zone change from rural five to rural service center, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this, at this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of fact and conclusions of law as written. This action does not result in a taking of private property. We have a motion on the floor to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners, project file ZZ 0002-20, zone change from rural five to rural service center. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
Second motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. None opposed, so we will be making recommendation to county commissioners to approve the zone change. So after their hearing, then you can discuss, the neighbors here can discuss with, with the owners, you know, that they lay out and protection of that easement. So, but that's a it is of record, so. Yes, that's it for that case. Thanks for coming in. Okay, so next file. File S 001-20, preliminary plat subdivision Spirit Lake North LLC. So again, first off, any conflicts of interest on this one?
Mr. Commissioner, I work for the Idaho Department of Lands, but I sit on this board as a private citizen and it will not affect my ability.
All right, thank you for divulging that. Any other conflicts? That's not a conflict. That was a, that was a
Disinterjection. Disclaimer.
Disclaimer, yes. None of this, okay. And there again, there's the proceedings. Everybody's here, saw it the last time, so won't have to go over it. And I think everybody's capable of participating. If not, let us know. We'll help you out. So this case, the first thing up is the staff report for Spirit Lake North, preliminary plat. And we have let's see who it is.
Which one is?
Haley.
All right, ready?
We are ready.
Okay, fantastic. All right, I am Haley, I'm planning with Bonner County. I am presenting Well Ridge, third addition, and we're in part of block four, block one, Well Ridge, first addition.
Haley, wait a minute. I have to do a disclosure because we're out of line here. So Mr. Taylor's firm is working with my firm.
Oh, did I do one out of sequence?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But however, this won't influence my decision in any way.
Okay, thank you. I I gotta go back to the agenda. Did I really goof up here? Oh, I see, we had another variance before on the agenda. Well, they're all scheduled for 5:30, so I think.
We're on good.
I have this one as next.
Yeah, that's what I thought, but.
And then the variance follows this.
Okay, that's what I thought it said, but. All right. Let's proceed then, Haley, with the staff report.
So the applicant is proposing a subdivision of a, you know, plus minus 130 acres of land to create 26 five acre lots consistently with Bonner County Revised Code. Like I said, it's around 130 acres and the land use is rural residential. Like I said, it's around 130 acres and the land use is rural residential and the zoning is Rural 5. The access will be provided by an extension of Barn Owl Drive onto proposed Peacock Lane to be built to satisfy the conditions set forth in the zone change 365-18. So environmental features to note, there are no mapped slopes, no mapped wetlands. It doesn't contain any waterfronts and it doesn't have any significant floodplain. Some site services include individual well, individual sub-surface sewage disposal and leach field as in the Spirit Lake Fire District and the power will be supplied by inland power and light. I just want to check in that everybody can hear me clearly.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. So here's an aerial view. The area highlighted in blue is the subject area to be developed, or I'm sorry, subdivided. And here is the submitted site plan showing the orientation and size of the lots and the proposed roadway, Peacock Lane. And this was subject to an amendment and zone change to make this area Rural 5 and was approved on April 11th of 2018. Here are our standards of review. There's quite a bit. It's our standard set of review standards for subdivisions. And here are the agencies routed. I'm not going to say them all, but a lot of them made no comment. And you can see that on the right-hand side. The agencies that did comment include Power and Light by Connie Nelson. She's saying that the plat has adequate proposed ingress, abress and utilities to perfect inland power and light to install, maintain and have access to their facilities. Matt Mulder from Bonner County Road Department commented that he recommends that a traffic impact study to examine the service capacity and turning movements at the intersection of Peregrine Road and Spirit Lake Cut-off to be done. He also recommends that the private easement extend to the boundary of the subdivision to allow potential interconnectivity to future emergency access. And then the Department of Environmental Quality stated that they pretty much provide an assortment of general comments. They also say that they did not do a complete thorough review of the submitted documents. Details of those should be in the attachments that were given to you. Also, our county engineer reviewed it. He reviewed the stormwater rating and road control and the private road construction plan against the Bonner County Revised Code. We found them to be incompatible. Idaho Department of Fish and Game, they identified potential for conflicts around pores between property owners and recreationalists abutting in property lands, increases of deer population where they are fed and not hunted, destruction of private property and loss of domestic animals from wildlife. They recommend to retain as much of the standing to manage practical for open space to group their building sites, maintain travel corridors, using wildlife-friendly fencing. Overall, private property owners will be responsible for all consequences resulting from any interaction with wildlife and the CCNR should outline those responsibilities. They gave some recommended language in their letter. Those details are in there. Overall, staff concluded that this project is consistent with the Bonner County Code based on the following. The applicant adequately addressed the majority of the applicable standards for the subdivision for Section F of the staff report. And then the conditions of approval will ensure compliance with the remaining standards to ensure that the final plat meets all the part standards. Here's a list of all of our standards. We have our regular ones such as all easements and insurance numbers pertaining to the subdivision shall be shown on the face of the plat. The roads within the subdivision are private. They have not been constructed to county standard for maintenance. Let's see, the roads shall be maintained at the sole expense of the property owners until such time it is constructed to county standards for maintenance at no expenses taxpayers. It is dedicated to the public by the lot owners and accepted into the county's maintenance system by the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. So on site-specific standards in B section, a final plat shall be recorded. A digital copy of the final plat shall be submitted to us. The preliminary plat shall be valid for a period not to exceed two calendar years. And that's our typical expiration timeline. Additionally, the applicant shall install hard ground-stirring activities, all temporary road patrol measures as designed and approved. The applicant shall also provide to the planning department hard ground-stirring activities a signed statement from a project engineer or design professional stating that these measures happen to support the design specifications as approved. The applicant shall install upon completing ground-stirring activities and shall maintain thereafter all permanent erosion control and stormwater management measures as designed and approved. The applicant shall provide to the planning department upon completing ground-stirring activities a signed statement and stormwater assistance as goals from the project engineer or design professional seeing that these measures have been installed as per the design specifications as approved. All stormwater facilities shall be installed and functioning as designed or suitable guarantee of completion shall be in place. Next, roads providing access to proposed subdivisions shall be constructed in accord with the recommendations of AM and ZC. Basically, the recommendation state that the roads need to be constructed to tackle 12 Appendix A low-volume power road standards and shall have a pH surface. For these six, prior to the final plat recording and prior to beginning construction, they shall have an improvement plan in the subdivision prepared by a registered civil engineer and a copy of the improvement plan will be filed with us. And then below is just the standard items that are, that need to be included with that improvement plan. B7 is giving the applicant the option to have a complete required improvements as outlined in Condition B5 and B6. And the required inspections are entered into a surety agreement with us. Additionally, the applicant shall provide one other phone for all proposed lots. And this is typically a note that's going to be on the face of the plat for fire suppression methods. It's just some options that they have. This is the last page. The final plat shall be endorsed with Panhandle District's approval because this is a regular plat. They shall provide a notice of intent and performance taken around to check and shoot construction general permit. And I do believe I just got that this morning. Prior to the final plat of these two, the applicant shall tell the traffic impact study to examine the service capacity and turning moments at the intersection of Peregrine Road and Spirit Lake Cut-off. We also recommend that the applicant extend the private easeness to the boundary of the subdivision to allow potential interconnectivity to future emergency access as recommended by Matt Mulder, I mean, the Bonner County Road Department. And then B13 is not included in the staff report. I'm leaving this as an option to the commission to add this last one. So if there's going to be CCNRs, they shall include the Idaho Department of Fish and Games recommended language to bring awareness to the future residences of the responsibilities they have for wildlife management on their own property and the potential consequences of damage. And I do believe that concludes my staff report. Are there any questions? I think you guys are muted.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I don't, thank you.
No questions? All right, thank you, Haley.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, applicants representative, step forward, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Marty Taylor, certified planning use planner with James A. Sewell and Associates representing the Quail Ridge folks. This is a two-phased plat. It's phased because there's about 3,300 millennial feet of road to be developed. That's about six tenths of a mile, which is a substantial amount of road. So the project has been phased is what we call, so you can record a final plat for phase one and then record a final plat for phase two. And in doing so, spread out, if you will, the necessary road improvements. That's pretty common. It's a logical extension of infrastructure to stop the road where it's shown on your preliminary plat. This is the third addition and last installment of the Quail Ridge project that we started in 2005. This will complete all of the various additions thereto. All of the subdivision design standards have met. They're fairly straightforward. Rectangular lot stepped to width is met. Lot size minimums are consistent with the rezonings that have occurred. Consistent with that rezoning, roads will be paved due to the projected average daily traffic. Some of you were on the planning commission a couple of years back when some of these rezonings occurred. And so the consensus was at that time in support of the proposed five-acre minimums, any future divisions of land or hard surface roads, so no problem with that. To that extent, we have already submitted road plans and those have been provided and were made a part of the application. They've already been reviewed, approved by the county public works department as well as an engineered stormwater manager plan. So we've checked that box. We had PhD review the project for sub-surface sewage disposal. So the site has been proven physically suitable for sub-surface sewage disposal, leach fields and septic tanks. Included in the application was a well log analysis showing we have an average production of nearly 30 gallons per minute. Typical house warrants about five gallons per minute. We have already completed the terms and conditions of B10. We filed the notice of intent with the EPA. That's on file now with the county planning department. That is the federal equivalency of a stormwater management plan. That's what the federal stormwater management plan does. It's a redundancy, but we have a county plan and then we have a federal plan. So that's what that notice of intent was. I do need to share with the planning commission that I was just made aware, not five minutes ago, that staff has added three proposed conditions, completely new to me as of this evening. I do not appreciate that. I'm going to respond accordingly. With regard to condition B11, with the late-breaking condition as to the need for a traffic impact study, I reject that entirely. There was a traffic impact study done already for the project in its entirety in 2005 where there were improvements to the intersection of Duffer Road and Spirit Lake Cut-off Road. There were turn lanes built at the intersection of Spirit Lake Cut-off Road and Peregrine Road. And there were funds placed in escrow to do improvements to the intersection of Highway 41 and the Spirit Lake Cut-off Road. So a simple review of the record would have revealed to staff that a traffic impact study has already been done, looking at the entire subdivision of 640 acres in the five-acre tracks. And so there is no need for any additional traffic impact analysis. It has occurred. Condition B11 should be not recommended to the commissioners. Condition B12, we object entirely to that. There will be no extending of easements to adjoining properties to provide any additional access. The Peregrine Road was built over the county standard. It exceeds the standard for fire protection so that there was no need for additional easements through. So we object to condition B12 in its entirety. With regard to condition B13, again, that's a condition that was just dropped on me a couple of minutes ago regarding fish and game. There are already ample covenants that restrict allowable uses on the property. There has been made a part of the record a defensive space plan for managing vegetation. So there should be no additional Department of Fish and Game conditions added to the project. So we are in agreement with conditions B1 through B10, which were provided to me back in March, so that I had an opportunity to review them. We don't have a problem with conditions A1 and A2, but these late inclusions of conditions B11 regarding a traffic study, B12 for additional easements, and B13 for covenants, I object to entirely. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we would respectfully request approval of the preliminary phased plat to the Board of County Commissioners without the addition of conditions B11, B12 and B13. Thanks.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Lynn Scott. Marty, one thing is, this has been kind of come up in a few of these subdivisions. Condition number B8, the requirement for a 2,000-gallon water storage tank. Now, it's referenced in there that it's prescribed by International Fire Code. I'm on the Segal Fire Commission. I'm on the Suckert Fire Department, have been for five or six years now. This was brought to our attention. Five acres and over, we're not going to go look at. IFC says we don't even have to look at. It's only 4.99 acres unless that we're going to require that. Where does this come up?
So the legislative history behind this, circa 2005, 2006, the county fire chiefs, there are numerous fire districts within Bonner County, got together with the county commissioners and said, "We need to do something to provide for fire flow for our rural residential divisions of land." So at that point, the county commissioners working with these chiefs said, "What are options for fire flow?" Well, there's a full-blown municipal fire system. That's the 1,000 gallons a minute. That's, you hardly find that in downtown Sandpoint. So that's a rather onerous type of fire suppression system. Another option was put in some kind of water storage, which is what Commissioner Lynn Scott has commented on, some kind of storage for an individual house. The third option is you can sprinkle your residence if you so choose. A fourth option is some kind of a man-made pond or what we also refer to as some kind of bulk storage. We've done projects where we put in 10,000-gallon tanks. And then there is the catch-all option, which is you can do whatever the fire district subscribes to at that time. So those are the five options that were derived around 2006 is when that came. Now, I am aware that since that time, and I've been working with this for the last 14 years, a lot of fire chiefs say, "Five acres or larger, I'm just going to sign off, find your permit. You don't have to put in the storage tank for the reasons that Commissioner Lynn Scott mentioned." When you get into the larger acreage tracks, you don't have to provide the fire flow. But the county code still recognizes those five options. So until that county code were to change, an applicant for a subdivision has to comply with one of those five standards. So that's the background and why we're still doing it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other points on this or history lessons?
No.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Anything else for Mr. Taylor? Okay.
I would appreciate, before the hearing's closed, a testimony. I am adamant about these last three bombs that have been dropped on me. And so I would appreciate that before the hearing's closed, if you do have questions of me, that I'd be allowed an opportunity to respond. We can pull those three conditions and put them on the screen. They're no longer on the screen. I had about two minutes to read them.
There may be, we will reserve that right too as we discuss it.
I appreciate that.
If there's anything. If there's anything that we need to ask you. All right, any members of the public care to testify in this one?
We do have some members of the public out here, but I don't know how to tell if they want to testify or not. Not allowing them to talk.
Wow.
So we could just call them one by one, I suppose.
Can you raise your hand?
They cannot raise their hand.
But we don't have, oh, we do have the magic phone.
Oh, they can speak if I allow them to speak.
Oh, well, I, they're, oh, I see. Yeah, well, let's go ahead and hear what they have to say.
So call them up by name.
Okay, first we have Craig Looper. Mr. Looper, can you hear us? Right, then passing on to the next person. We have Gala online. No response. Let's go to the next name. Nothing from Mr. Looper or Gala, so we'll go to Mark Powers. Hello?
Yeah, no comment.
No comment, okay.
No comment, okay. Let's see, anything from Mr. Looper or Gala? No. Seth Levy?
Yes, hello, no comment on this one. I comment on the, on the next item.
Okay. And is that?
That's it.
That was Seth. Oh, I see. Okay, so we don't have anything from either Gala or Craig Looper. All right. So no public testimony. Okay, so there's no further public testimony. And Mr. Taylor has offered to be involved in further discussion about conditions B eleven, twelve and thirteen. So let's end the public testimony and go into deliberation with the availability of discussing those conditions with Mr. Taylor as the need arises.
Okay. So we get down to the end of the horse race and now they want Mr. Taylor's client to spend thirty thousand dollars on traffic study. It doesn't need to be done.
Which was already done. I mean, that was, that was, I recall that was a major effort and a rather historic one as well, resulting in certain improvements and further actions, so.
As this project has moved forward, everybody who has represented it has talked about those intersections.
Exactly.
And everything else. So it comes to the point is, we've been paying attention, but obviously something's not getting through, so.
Okay.
And then so if we look on the existing plot, plan map, none of those other end of the roads where they hammerhead for the fire truck extend to the next piece of property.
Correct. So again, there's a history there from the past plats. Reasons why, and I don't know that anything has changed.
I, I agree with Marty as well. The, those three additional requirements are unnecessary.
Well, same with the fishing game. I mean, it's, I mean, where were they three, four years ago?
Yeah.
A bear might eat your chicken.
We might have.
And we've heard from fishing game on other cases in the area down there. And they have made similar comments about the need to have a maintainability for animals to course through the area and not be restricted and so forth. I don't. Of course, on the previous cases of Spirit Lake North, there were no such comments or provisions made specifically to that. It's being very similar, not nearly identical. Any thoughts on that?
Commissioner Glasso from Zoom.
Yes.
Yep. If this had been heard back in March as scheduled, eleven, twelve and thirteen, as I understand, would not have been there. So I am not comfortable with them being presented now in June.
Okay, thank you.
Good point.
Yep.
It's out of date still.
All right, so. Any other comments, questions, discussions about it? This is, I guess, was stated, the final, the final addition to Spirit Lake North. And there's a long track record of previous developments, having both weathered time and various economic conditions, at least of which is what we're in now, but the ones back in the mid-two thousands, this whole arrangement. Okay?
And part of that, at that time, if I'm remembering right, Marty, you can help too, was we did recommend and they followed through with hard surfacing.
Oh, yes.
Of that, and that's been completed, hasn't it?
Yeah, that's right. That we stated in the application and in the staff's report that that's ongoing and will continue through this, this subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lynn Scott, I move to recommend approval to, to the board of county commissioners on this project, file S zero 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 one dash twenty for a subdivision of approximately one hundred and thirty acres of land to create twenty-six five plus or minus acre lots in the stormwater plan, finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing, I further move to adopt the following findings of facts and conclusions of law as written or amended. This action that could be taken to attain the plat is to complete the conditions of approval with the exceptions of B eleven, twelve and thirteen. As adopted, this action does not result in taking our private property.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to recommend approval to the board of county commissioners, file S zero 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 one dash twenty with the deviation from the staff report to not impose conditions B eleven, twelve or thirteen. Is there a second?
Commissioner, a second.
Oh.
All right. Commissioner Glasso got here first. For the second. All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend approval for this subdivision. Any further discussion? Okay, therefore, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We will recommend approval as stated. Mr. Time? You're welcome. Stay healthy. Now, according to the printed agenda, we have file V zero 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 four dash twenty, minimum lot size variance. So again, we have, you've all seen the procedure enough times, we know what it is. Any conflicts of interest on this case? And therefore, if we could get the staff report on this one going, looks like we do. Can you hear me now? You're alive. All right, this is variance file V zero zero four dash two zero. And this is a Bo variance. The, the. The applicant is requesting a lot size minimum variance allowance for, for a one acre, for, for one acre parcels where ten acres is required for the purpose of creating four new lots. This, this project site is located off Lariat Court, directly south at the end of the road, approximately six point nine miles from Doofert Road. So this is, is west of, of Segal and just east of Le Cleed. The existing parcel is a hundred and sixty-one acres. As you can, as you can see, here on the, on the proposed site plan is the location of the proposed lots, which would be waterfront along the river. The applicant is asking for the, that lot size variance from ten acres to one acres and then through a minor land division process matched the county's approved adjacent subdivision to the north for the purpose of consolidating the building site to the high ground and minimizing the impact to the wetland and larger parcel development would have. The proposed four lots have been designed and placed as if they were part of the ranch at River Bend. As, as earlier mentioned, it's, it's currently zoned ag forest or site data is being used as, is ag forest. It's, it's unplatted and it's currently zoned R ten. You can see here, this zoning map, that the, 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 the yellow arrow indicates the location of the proposed lots and we can see the surrounding zoning. It's a little bit of a, of a hodgepodge in that area. Access to the proposed lots is already in place by way of Lariat Court, which is a public road easement for ingress and egress coming off Lariat Court would access the proposed lots. The environmental factors, the wetlands exist in the area and the flood plain runs the entire length of waterfront. As you can see here, the proposed lots are designed to be on the waterfront portion of the parcel that is not wetland, which is indicated by the yellow arrow. However, if wetlands are determined to be close, they're proposing to get the wetlands delineated by a wetland specialist. The services for, for these proposed lots, they're proposing connecting to the existing water service system that is at the Ratchet River Bend subdivision to the, to the north. They're also planning on a shared leach field community type system for septic. And power and phone is located nearby, just, just along the Lariat Court. We did, we did send out for agency review and we did receive comments back from DEQ referencing the importance of air quality and the importance of, of keeping water quality and, and soil contamination in that area with proximity to wetlands and to the river. We received a comment from Panhandle Health that mentioned that they did not have any current permitting for a community system in that area and that, that permitting would, would be required in order to move forward. We did, as far as public comments, we did receive a letter from, and a, from a landowner representative wanting to postpone the, this, this presentation tonight until they had more time to meet as a homeowners association and discuss some of these, these topics and issues and, and we're fairly adamant about having time to, to get together and talk with the neighbor about his plans and how it might impact or affect the, the community to the north. The. As you can see, represented by this, this map on the screen right now with, with the flood plain and the surrounding wetlands areas, the idea of consolidating the home sites to the area that's, that's not impacting the wetland makes, makes sense in this application here. Mr. Bo could certainly do four ten acre lots there, but the majority of those home sites would be in wetland and flood plain and impact those areas. And so he's asking for a variance to consolidate the home, four home sites to the high ground outside of this wetland area. And, and that, that makes sense in, in this particular scenario. Staff is recommending approval on, on this variance, but is, does, does have a a, a few conditions that would, would need to be followed. The first, roads must be built to the same standard as the adjoining subdivision. Lots must have a state approved septic system. The lots must have access to the Ratchet River Bend's shared water system. And, and lots would have power and utilities to each lot and wetlands would be delineated on, on the plat to indicate where the wetlands are. And that is my, my presentation. I'll take any questions if you have them.
I think the office is muted, the main net.
Sorry, I'll, I'll start over, Josh. This is Commissioner Bradshaw. Did, did you figure out the percentage of the property that's in wetland? Because it looks like on the arrow map that there's quite a few building sites that are, you know, just not waterfront, which may not be ideal. But if you're using the argument of, of being encumbered by the wetland, there are still. You're using the argument of, of being encumbered by the wetland, there are still places to build.
So if you'll notice the property, it will, you clearly you can see the wetland and, and then you can see that there's an, an airfield there in the center of the property. There's an airstrip. And that's, that's a registered airport with the FAA. And so it, although we're seeing ground, it's, it's not necessarily ground that could be. Used to put houses on.
But that airstrip is owned by the applicant?
Correct.
So he could build the house. He just wouldn't have his airstrip any longer.
I'm sure the applicant could, could, yeah, I guess he could if he wanted to.
Commissioner Glasso, Josh, are we running into a fly in, fly out situation there since you mentioned an airstrip?
No, I, I haven't heard any proposal of connecting the, those four lots to the airport. It seems that, that, that. The landowner would like to subdivide off a, a portion of his property, but doesn't have any interest of, of, of. Connecting it with that, that air, airport or that runway.
Thank you. We don't want another hangar situation.
Josh, have you walked that property? Commissioner Reeve, I'm sorry.
I, I did get a chance to go down there. I did not go on the property. I did drive down Lariat Court Road and looked over the fence. That's a public, public road, but I did not go onto Mr. Bo's property.
I have walked the property that had joined that and. I know that, and Matt, you probably know this, when they were developing down there, there was a lot of issues. With wetlands and being able to build. On quite a few of those lots that had joined and this property is pretty much the same. I've walked some of that in the springtime when he couldn't walk it. As a sinking.
Also Josh, this is Dawn. For clarification, the colors on the map, the purple are. National Wetland map?
It is, yes.
And the green, the light green?
It's wetland, but it's, it's a different classification of wetland. It has different plant species and habitats in. In the purple versus the green.
Okay. So probably the purple is forested wetland and the other is emergent.
That it, that's what the map seems to represent. Yes.
Right. And again, that's NWS.
It, it is. I believe I have that, that slide here. This is the, the national wetland mapper.
Josh, how accurate are all those maps?
They're, they're.
Case by case.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, they're, they're close.
Yeah, I know. It's a loaded question.
Between the layers overlapping on, on the imagery and the way GIS stacks them up. There is some, I mean, there is, sometimes they're closer than other times, but they're not always right on.
It's a second question. Okay.
Josh, Commissioner Glasso. This might be crystal ball kind of thing. This might be a county thing and maybe you can't respond to this. But there is scuttle going on right now in regards to the county pulling out of FEMA. How would that affect this in regards to the fact of wetlands? And I don't know if you can respond to that.
I, I, I don't think I would, I'm not going to jump in on that one. That would be something for our, for Jason Johnson, our, our. Well, you know, our flood plain manager, he could speak to that. I, I, I'd put my foot in my mouth.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
But I can, I mean, we didn't, we're not getting out of flood plain stuff. We, all we did was get out of the community rating system. So we're still reviewing flood plain. People still have to get a flood development permit in order to build in the flood plain. We just, we got out of the community rating system that, that has to do with discounts on flood insurance rates.
Milton, I really appreciate that because the local papers don't, you know, kind of portray that. So I really appreciate that Milton. Thank you.
That article was all mixed up.
And I sent him the PowerPoint, so I don't know what to tell you.
Need a horse to water?
Yeah.
But he might be drinking something else.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right.
Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
At this time, if the applicant. Wants to come forward and give a presentation.
My name is Travis Howler. I'm a Canadian associate representing the property owner Wiley Bo. The overview of this project is Wiley Bo's wanting the variance to go from the rule 10. Which requires the minimum lot size to be 10 acres to go down to one. That one acre size that we're representing is because that mimics what is adjacent to the north, the Ranch at River Bend subdivision. Plus, we don't want to make it any larger to give up more land. Plus, by doing that, that would make them much more favorable and we want to try to. Be as compliant and as conforming to the Ranch at River Bend. To give you a little history, the overview is that property to the north where the subdivision is at was owned by our client Wiley Bo. And we sold it to the developers. They went through lengthy discussions and negotiations in order to get. The CCNRs for the Ranch at River Bend to have Wiley Bo and his request in it. Those being access to his property through the subdivision and water from the community system at Ranch at River Bend. To supply Wiley Bo in any endeavor that he in the future would like to pursue. This being the case. For sewer, if this was variance was approved and the lots were developed, sewer would be through a community septic system and leach field. And utilities, Josh, Pilsch that I mentioned as well, they're already a utility easement fronting. The current lots at Ranch at River Bend along the lake and those would just be extended. So everything's in place to, to add for more lots. We recognize that the variance application needs to be three main criteria in order to be approved. And if I may hit on those a little bit, they were in the application. But the first one means any special conditions and circumstances that do not result from the actions of the applicant. The special conditions and circumstances of. We are, we understand that we're within the wetlands. But just like anybody else that wants to develop in the wetlands, like Josh Pilch had said, you know, we have to jump through all the hoops. We still have to get the. All the applications, the flood permits and go through. I believe it's a flood permits and get elevation certs. So we are aware of that. You don't see that being anything out of the norm. Explain how greening the greens is not in conflict with public interest. That's another one. It's not in, we believe it's not in conflict with public interest being the fact that these, that the subdivision to the north. Was negotiated with Wiley Bo in mind and the public as it was being developed with the developer. And then the third one. What conditions apply to the property that do not generally apply to other properties in the same zone or vicinity? Well, we have a subdivision to the north that does already have these lot sizes and are in place. We're looking just to mimic that and looking for the same approval that they had. If this variance was approved, we would further then move into the minor land division. And I believe that process would take care of all the concerns that have been had with this. I, I see no reason for objection. The lot sizes, like I mentioned, could be larger, but we're wanting to mimic. The subdivision to the north. So we're hoping for approval on this.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, the variance is strictly only for those four lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
You know what, what year the subdivision to the north was created and approved?
It was after 2008.
After 2008? Any other question, questions? Other questions? Okay. Any other comments that you want to make or?
Yeah, Attorney Toby McLaughlin for the petitioner here. And I would prefer if I could reserve my comments until after the public comments.
Well, we're in public comment now, so this is your chance.
Yeah, I, I mean, what I intend to do, I think I am here probably for the most part to rebut what the individuals who are on the.
Oh, I see. I see. So, all right. So you'll be, when we have more public comment. Okay. All right.
I can do it either way.
Well, let's hear what they say first and put it in context and then we can. All right. So we will then open it up for. For these other individuals. So. So first let's try again with. Craig Looper. Mr. Looper. All right, then we'll move on to. Gala.
No comment.
No comment. Thank you. All right. Now let's see, Mr. Powers.
No comment.
Thank you. And finally, we have Seth Levy.
Hi, this is, this is Seth Levy. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. So this is Seth Levy. I live at 207 Lariat Court. It's the property immediately adjacent to the, the four proposed lots. We are of course, part of the Ranch at River Bend HOA. And which has, has been described at CCR is, CCNR is to relate particularly to this project. I want to be careful to say that we are, we are absolutely not objecting to our neighbor, Mr. Bo's application. We had submitted a letter requesting a continuance so that we would have some time to sort out a number of questions and issues. But we are not objecting and part of the reason for that. To be transparent is that our CCNRs actually have a provision and then that purported to prohibit us from objecting to any zoning change. Most of the language of that provision is blacked out in the copy of the CCNRs that I think were submitted for some reason, but. We want to be very careful not to breach those obligations. We really are just trying to sort out some questions. Our concerns are primarily that as proposed, this development creates other conflicts with the CCNRs. Where, where we fear that our HOA would wind up in breach just by virtue of the development playing out the way it's planned. And so for example, our CCNR is required that we maintain an electric fence along the common property line that would. Basically run the entire length of the first residential lot that's proposed. We're also meant to provide a lockable six foot high, 16 foot wide chain link gate across. What would now be, we think, an extension of Lariat Court. It's not clear if the road is actually proposed to be extended through that gate or if this is a driveway or some other access point. There's also a number of questions about our water system and road maintenance. You know, as has been described, the idea is to sort of replicate what was created with the HOA with adding four more lots that mimic. What's in the HOA, but of course these lots are not part of the HOA. So while they have access to the water system and our, our pump. There hasn't yet been discussion about who would carry the costs of upgrading or maintaining the pump and generator system. Or what would happen with road maintenance, because these are in fact county roads, but the HOA maintains them at present. And so that too is an issue we expect we can work out. We just haven't had an opportunity to do so. So several of us within the HOA who live here year round have done our best on short notice to try to get together and. You know, get some kind of consensus and make sure people are at least aware of the situation. So we can work with our neighbor to resolve some of this. Unfortunately, you know, some of the neighbors here are seasonal. They're not here and presumably coronavirus has prevented them from traveling. Others haven't built their homes yet. And of course, compounding all of this is that while we have an HOA, it has not yet elected officers or had its first meeting. We are just in the process of getting that started now. So again, that's part of the reason why we're just trying to get our act together. So we can all work together to hopefully ultimately support this application. There's just a number of issues that we feel we need to work through first. So that's why we, we requested the continuance, but of course, whatever the commission chooses to do, we'll look forward to working with our. You know, with our neighbor, Mr. Bo to, to sort these things out and, and move ahead. But thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Levy, when did you request a time extension on this case to be heard?
So we had, a letter was submitted by our council a week ago. So I think it was just in advance of the deadline.
So that's it. Okay. Thank you. See. Oh, okay. I didn't see the letter. Okay. Right. And let's see, any other questions for Mr. Levy? Okay, thank you. Stay tuned. We'll, you'll hear our discussion here in a minute, but. So any other, there's no other public comments. We ran through the list. So therefore at this time, if. If Mr. McLaughlin would care to respond, I guess you call it.
Thank you. Again, Toby McLaughlin for the petitioner here, the Wiley Bo Trust is technically property zone. I think it's important to remember that although the map's big of this property, it's 160 some acres. We're only talking about a very small portion of very, and north, the northeast corner of it, I guess it's called. Essentially four or five acres worth of property. And that's, that's it. That's all he's looking to develop here. The only, you know, there have been no, I think it's also important to note that there haven't actually been any objections by the public or by anybody to this plan. The, Mr. Levy, and I appreciate his comments indicates that he did not object. Mr. McDonald, his attorney submitted a letter, submitted another letter today saying that. They're not objecting. So that's, that should be clear on the record. The, as Mr. Haller just stated, this whole project was brought to fruition with. The help of Mr. Bo in the sense that he sold the property and he specifically negotiated specific terms in that sale. And those are set forth in the CCNRs that he was able to obtain and he. didn't object when the Ranch River Bend developers were before the commissioners asking for the same thing. They were asking for the ability to develop this size lots. These lots are the same size essentially as the waterfront lots there. And he didn't object because he had some assurances from them, and they granted those by way of a recorded covenant. And those are of record in modern county public records, specifically the important ones. It's the most recent amended CCNRs specifically have a section 33 that lays out all sorts of protections for the Bo property. And and those protections specifically include the ability to run their utilities through the Ranch River Bend so that there wouldn't be a burden later. You wouldn't need to do that. That's all in place. They include the right to hook into the community water system of the Ranch River Bend. That was that that system was designed to accommodate particularly this development property. The issues of the road, it's a public road. You know, I it's there's no need to do anything else other than do that. However, the realities of the situation are that if it turns out that the water system needs improvements because of the increased capacity, or if the road maintenance is an issue, those are issues that parties can work out. There Idaho law exists for that reason. These covenants are in place. It's just a matter of interpreting them, negotiating those those deals, but that isn't respectfully, I don't think that's a reason to deny the variance or to delay it for any reason. Those issues can be worked out later. The I know Mr. Bo is fine. He wants to work with his neighbors. The it's an interesting concept, this gate fence issue. Again, that can be worked out. That the fence and gate is within this section 33, which is to benefit Mr. Bo and his property. And so if he's the beneficiary of that covenant, certainly choose to waive it if that's what's necessary. He can work with the homeowners association, which I think is, you know, I'm looking at these CCNRs, and they've been in place since 2014. So there's been some time, and I understand developments where you have out of out of town owners, you know, it's hard to get people to participate. I represent a lot of homeowners associations. I understand that. Those are all issues we can work out. The reality is, if you look at the code for the basis of the, you know, it's 12-234 of modern county code, all of these are satisfied here, and particularly the conditions that apply. You know, this particular setup is meant to match what has already been approved by this commissioner. The wetland issues all can be addressed, you know. If it if they can't, then they're not going to be able to build on. But that shouldn't matter with the lot size is they're just not going to be able to build wetlands. If they can, they're going to have to deal with all of the regulations. The circumstances with that are specific to this property are the fact that it's already abutting up against another subdivision that matches it exactly. It is intended and was designed to essentially extend that subdivision. While it's not part of the subdivision, it has no more burden than anything else. The public benefit is, I think, fairly obvious, which is to create four additional waterfront lots in in an area where waterfront lots are scarce. You know, it's hard to get waterfront here. Increasing those to the 1.4 acre lots, you know, that's what they're averaging size creates a greater tax base. It creates a greater benefit to the county and to the public citizens and allows additional lots for people. So I think unless the commissioners have any questions, I think that addresses.
Toby, I do. Commissioner Lewis, the I see one of the the conditions on here says that they want those lots to be fronted public right of way. I'm think, let me public road access to the proposed lots. So where it extends off of that Lariot Drive going south, is that going to be? Is that going to be open to public road? So all four lots to join the public?
I'm going to have to let Mr. Haller address that. I don't know the answer.
Right now, we're proposing an easement across the lot, so no. But as Seth said, you know, depending on the homeowners and what they want, I believe why they will would be open to that idea if needed.
Okay. I may have one more question for you guys. You have staff, either Josh or Milton. Since these parcels are less than two and a half acres, I thought code says that they all have to front a public right of way. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and I can't remember if that if it stayed in there where there has to be a 60-foot right of way or a 30-foot right of way.
Right, it would depend. We'd have to look at it.
Okay.
But that's why we put the condition in. So yeah, I do have a couple of comments, but I think I'll wait till you're done with.
Okay.
Commissioner Reed, clarification. This road has been dedicated to the public, but is maintained by the homeowners?
Yes, from Travis Haller. Again, that is correct. Yeah. It's been dedicated in public through the Ranch River Bend.
Okay, other questions or comments on the responses? No? Okay, all right. So thank you for that. So that does conclude the public testimony portion of the hearing. Okay.
You know, I think I just picked up what Milton was. I like that picture, Milton. That's awesome. I think I just picked up on what you were kind of alluding to. This is a variance for those parcels. This is not the subdivision itself, right? The 60-foot access, those requirements would actually be put in place at the time of the minor land division or the subdivision.
Well, except for if he's going to do a minor land division, we needed to put them in place now with the variance. So so just a little bit to tell you our thought process, the thought process we went through on this. So first, first, we looked at it from should we require him to do a zone change? And difficult because it would have been a spot zone, and it would have been a serious spot zone because the whole area is owned R5. So then the the next tool would be a PUD, right? Make him go through a PUD. The challenge with doing the PUD is he would have to have addressed the entire 160 acres to create four lots. And so making him go through an entire PUD or putting the property through an entire PUD was was a challenge because when folks start to do that, then they then it gets bigger than maybe it was intended to be. If you look at that, if you look at that land that is, you know, around the wetlands, there's there's roughly about 10 acres there. There's not much land, 10, 10 to 15 acres. You could probably delineate the wetland back some and and get a few more, but there's not a lot there. And there are some issues that need to be addressed with floodplain as they start to build. But when we reviewed it, we looked at it not only from the perspective of the variance, but also from the perspective of the PUD. And so that's why some of those conditions are in the variance, that the roads need to be brought up to a standard that would meet those requirements. That, you know, that things are done differently or a little more effectively or whatever than we would normally do with the lot size minimum variance. So while this while we think this is a good recommendation, also taking into consideration the comments from the neighbors and their request to look this over further. We don't, we don't know for a certainty what impact this will have on the water system. We don't know for a certainty what what impact this will have on some of the other things that these neighbors are concerned about. So either either, you know, make a recommendation or, you know, either approve it with conditions and try to address all of those concerns that the neighbors have, or table it for 60 days, which would be August 6, and and let the neighbors try and work out these details, ask them to come back in 60 days with some answers to those questions. And, you know, so we feel more comfortable approving one-acre lots. I mean, we understand the justification for it, and I don't think that we're opposed to it, but it needs to address some of those standards in the code. And so, you know, come back in 60 days with some of those answers. And the only reason I say 60 days is because we are booked solid until then. So.
I think that's consistent with the request for a delay as well. So one other question, Milton. Notice this, the PUD concept, I can understand that, getting lot sizes that are less than less than what the zone requires, but averaging and everything else. Would that be the same as a conservation subdivision?
It could. It would. Again, the challenge would be the the impact to the 160 acres that perhaps the property owner is not intending for. Maybe he doesn't want to plan that all out right now. Maybe he wants to just address these four lots because they are contiguous to this subdivision, because they they make sense being contiguous to this subdivision. And and then maybe he'll address or leave to his, you know, relatives to address the other part later. Who knows, right? But I think he's just doing this because it makes sense and it's simple and.
Okay.
The rest, you'll have to ask them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Milton, I got a question for you. The you referenced using a minor land division for this process. Is that how they will break it up?
Sure, sure. That's it's a that's a good process. The challenge with it is it doesn't address some of these things that we're talking about. That's why it's important that they be added here as the decisions.
Well, yeah, I thought you could only do a minor land division into four.
Yep.
So but that would that would create five parcels out of the original parcel.
So the so we do not regulate the creation of lots larger than 20 acres?
Okay.
So the fifth is a remainder, but it is a remainder over 20 acres.
So then they could continue to do minor land divisions until they got down to 20 acres on the remaining parcel?
There are several around the county that have done that, yes. We're working on some things.
Bite at a time.
Yeah, it's it's not. History has shown that that may not be the best way to divide land. And I, in a way, this has a little bit of that here. The landowner sold the other piece. It was developed, and CCNRs were put into into effect on those lots in order so that he would cleanly have a path forward. And yet now we've got a couple of little hiccups that probably could be explained, but you know, it's just still with the same owner and and being in control of this property with a vested interest in the previous ownership. So I it's just, yeah, over time, things change, owners change, reasons change, economy changes. We don't have the same setup forever. So I I'm a little leery of that, but that's why, and granted, if he was to do a conservation subdivision or PUD, it would address the entire property, and he'd be he'd be bound to that decision for the rest of the property. Not that it couldn't be amended later, but it would involve the rest of the property, which he may not be willing to do at this point. Okay, any other questions for staff or at this point? Okay, thank you. All right, so we are in deliberation.
Nice to have you on the beach, by the way.
We noticed that.
Sorry.
That is pretty awesome.
We should get this. That's better than Yoda. I like it better than Yoda.
So Josh's presentation, he said he needed some more time, obviously pointing to where we are now. So I think it would be best for the applicant and the applicant's neighbors to continue to file to August 6. Mr. McLaughlin, would that give you guys plenty of time to get together and get all this worked out?
I think it would. I know my client is eager to get this property going, and there's such a short building window.
We understand that.
The other thing is that these are the homeowners. I don't know how many there are that are full-time and only, you know, part-time residents. So getting them all together within 60 days, including my client, is not in state, may be a challenge, but I don't think that it means that we need to not, you know, need to table this. I think the conditions, I think, are worthy and justifiable, like Milton had suggested. And I don't see why that can't be addressed, you know, down the road when you get to go. The 60 days, I think, like I said, may be a challenge to get everybody together, to put an actual timeframe on it. Whereas I think if the conditions were applied to the variance, I think it would be a much better idea.
If I could just say one last thing, if these the subdivision has been in place since late 2008 or 2009, you know, the amended CCNRs were in 2014, and they still have formed a HOA or elected officers. I don't know if 60 days is going to be close to enough. If they don't have a board, just don't.
No, they don't have a board ready to act, and you know, we want, we want happy faces. We don't want unhappy faces.
Mr. Levy, I believe is an attorney, but he can't speak on behalf of all the others.
No. Well, that's nothing too. I can't remember how many lots are in that other subdivision.
At least 11? Twelve or 12 or 13 that are riverfront. Then there's four or five more big lots in the back.
And on the each way or the bylaws, I don't know how many it would take to create a forum.
And how many are full-time? How many are part-time? We don't know.
My feeling is that I do think more time should be taken. I know it's not what is desired, but I think there are some real concerns. And after working in that area myself, I understand what these folks are saying with some of their concerns. And I think if to be continued on, I think we need to give thought to what they have brought up and a few other items too. I don't see any reason to rush anything through just for developer to continue. We've all been held up with this virus and with the other stuff going on. I think we need to listen and pay attention and address some of these.
So Milton, is there a way we could write a condition in there so at least we could get the zone change done tonight?
There's no zone change. Just.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Glasso, I need to make a statement. I did not know that Toby was going to be representing, and Toby has represented me in a personal situation. It does not affect this case, but had I had known, I would have disclosed it. It does not affect me, but I need to disclose it now.
Thank you very much. You know, as I read the conditions of the variance, roads must be built to the same standard as adjoining subdivision road. They're going to have to be public. Lots must have a state-approved septic system or sewer system connection. Lots must have access to the Ranch River Bend shared water system. Lots must have power utilities to each lot. Wetlands will be delineated on the plan. So I understand the concerns of the adjoining subdivision, however, I also believe that those conditions, as as written in here, are going to suffice. If it becomes, if it just before they actually apply for the actual plat or minor land division, the lots must have access to the Ranch River Bend shared water system.
So that would show up under reason that's on the plan?
Right. I mean, it's not up to us to determine how many gallons of amount of the well is going to be able to produce.
And we had testimony that the water system was put in place, and it does accrue to the benefit of the the subject property.
And wasn't there a comment?
Yeah.
In one of the letters about it, the the people that are there now question.
Question, what's that?
They question the adequacy. They question the adequacy of the well.
Well, yeah. Right, that was there. Um, however, when Mr.
Mr. Bo.
Mr. Bo gone ahead and set that, allowed that and sold that off, he had those reservations put in place.
That's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't see that the conditions of approval of this, of the variance are, are in question relative to the previous action, the subdivision and the C C R's.
Correct.
So.
We really don't have anything to say about C C R's anymore.
No, no, they're purely, purely up to those elders, um, even to amend them, all the, so that, yeah.
But as Milton said, I, I, on those roads, you know, the roads have to be up to the same standard as a joining subdivision road. Uh, like, correct me if I'm wrong, Milton, but these lots have to front a public road. They don't have to be public maintained, but they have to front a public right of way.
Right.
And so if we put that in there, if we add that verbiage, roads must be built to the same standard as a joining subdivision road, being dedicated to the public.
Yeah.
That would check that one out of the box. The septic systems, you know, we are not, our health division, they're gonna have to figure that out. And the wetlands delineation, it gets delineated and they say there's no place to build, can't build on it.
It is.
But. We could just go, all easements must be shown on final plat.
Well, it, it needs to be a public right of way, so it needs to be dedicated on the plat. So it shouldn't be an easement on the plat, it should be a.
It should be a dedicated right of way.
He's writing.
Dedicated right of way, water, water system.
So we're on water.
Yeah. All right, so if someone is ready to make a motion.
He's, he's thinking about it.
He's writing.
So this is a question for staff, just, uh, I guess taking care of, uh, dotting our i's, crossing our t's. The conditions of this variance paragraph, does that need to be in? I don't know, at the bottom?
Yeah.
Under conditions of approval?
It will be, I'll move that.
It will be?
Yes, I'm actually.
Okay.
So it's not often that a. Variance. Can have conditions, but it's a little odd.
We can train it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Happy faces, smile.
Okay. I was actually thinking more of a zone change with conditions, that's like a, it's all change.
Not do that.
Yeah, not recommended. Okay, so where we are ready for a?
I'll give this to staff. Commissioner Lynn Scott, I have moved to approve this project file V zero 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 four dash two zero. A lot size minimum variance aligned for one acre parcels where ten acres is required. For the purpose of creating four new lots, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County revised code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law. And based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received over this hearing. I further move to adopt the following findings of facts and conclusions of law as written. The action that could be taken to attain the variance is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. With the additional language of the roads need to be dedicated to public right of way. This action does not result in the taking of private property.
Okay, motion on the floor to approve file V zero 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 four dash twenty. Lot size minimum variance allowing one acre parcels. Is there a second?
Commissioner Glasso, a second.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion? So the other conditions about the, the, uh, septic and water, they, they're already taken care of because of the. Do. All right, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have two, uh, two noes and one, two, three, four yays, so the motion carries. Okay. There you go. Now, um, so that, that, that approves a variance, so it's incumbent on everybody to get together and talk. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Milton's looking for that seatbelt.
Is it flying? That's what he's looking at. I'm just waiting for, uh, for him to develop his A R.
You don't have your hat on, so watch out for those seatbelts.
I'm waiting for.
All right, so the final item on our agenda is file A M zero 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 five dash twenty. Amendment to text Bonner County revised on the final twelve.
Oh, I'm gonna turn my camera on.
Okay.
Why don't you just come downstairs?
I'm gonna run to the restroom.
All right, yeah, anybody need a break? We're gonna have a little, we're having, uh. We're gonna pause.
You don't have an individual break or a group break?
Well. One ride and a break. protesting here.
We're still on the live YouTube.
Right, just saying.
It's a true statement.
Dan can say it, so other people can't.
Okay, so what do we got here?
I might just have to come downstairs.
Yeah, that's, that's all you gotta do.
So is my screen showing?
It is presenting very well.
It's, uh, if you could blow that up size-wise, not dynamite-wise. No, that didn't help. Just gave us twice the headache.
Seriously, what do I do?
Can you make it bigger?
No, what do I do? Oh, okay.
This movie has been modified to pitch your screen. Doesn't work. Put City Beach back on.
No, no job of it.
We like Yoda, Yoda was alright.
I think that was awesome.
That was a month ago, I think.
Yeah.
May the fourth.
Yeah, but he's used it since.
It's true, he did.
There you go.
There you go.
Yep, that's better.
Goodness, interesting. So I have three screens and so when I met, so when I made it go live, it, it split apart. All right, so here we go, uh, this is, uh. This is a result of lots and lots and lots of staff meetings where we. Have long debates over which is the front yard, which is the rear yard, which is the side yard. These properties out here are so keywampus sometimes that, uh. You know, we'll have a road on three sides, it'll have a road going through the middle, it'll have a road. And so defining the front yard sometimes is very difficult. We've defined, we've defined properties that have three front yards and a side yard. Go figure that one out.
Three roads, three road front.
Yeah, we've defined them that, you know, have all front yards, one front yard, or, you know, something like that, so. How can you see it?
Yeah, it's still same size, we just got a great big white screen around it.
And now you can zoom in though.
Oh, there you go. Oh, yes, you, you got the right button that time.
Well, like, yeah, I've got a screen up here.
Very good.
All right, so.
We should see what you see.
You do now, this is what I see, it's just that I'm only eighteen inches away from it.
Yeah, his, his monitor is almost that big too, on his desk.
Oh my god.
About three quarters that size, he's got two other sides.
So what we're doing is we're getting rid of the front and rear yard and side yard setbacks and changing it to a street setback and a property line setback. The challenge with that is in doing so, we also took the opportunity to address some of the challenges that we're having with setbacks. For example, you see the forty-foot setback changed to twenty-five feet. Property line setback in some of these areas. We, last year, we issued fifty variances. Twenty-eight of them came to you. And the rest were a variation of, uh. Of, uh, thirty percent variance and then a ten percent variance.
I just took the trick.
So that's what, that's what you're seeing here is this change to, this change to, uh, these setbacks. This year so far, we're at, we're at fifteen variances, regular variances that come to you and, um. We're, we're twenty-seven total, fifteen of them have come, are coming to you. In, in, uh, July, we've got one night, there's five variances on the agenda. So. From the street, uh, is defined in the code, including any portion of private easement, providing access to three or four, three or more lots beyond the subject lot of parcels. So, so if there's a street and the street is defined as legal access, as simple as legal access. Or way up to, you know, a major road. And so a street could be, uh, if it, if it goes past your house and goes to more than three, three or more lots. Uh, you would have to have a twenty-five foot setback. So. Um, that's the way we, uh, that, that's one of the, one of the changes, the, the street setback. The property line setback, um, again, we, we tried to simplify the way we address these side yard setbacks. Uh, based on, you know, when you have these smaller lots out in these larger zones. You can't have twenty-five and forty-foot setbacks, so we have these variations. Basically, we just made it, if it's less than an acre. You can have reduced setbacks to five feet from the property line. Twenty-five feet from the road or from the street is always gonna be there. Five feet and twenty-five feet will vary on the size of the lot. Basically, if the size of the lot goes below five acres, uh, it could be a five-foot setback. If it's five acres or larger, uh, oh, I lied, if it's, you see it here. So if it's an acre or smaller, it's five feet, if it's an acre to five, it's ten feet, and then five acres and over, it's twenty-five. For the property.
Milton, can we go back to the side yard setback?
Yep.
Why are you changing that?
We're changing it to property line setback because defining, defining what the side yard is on many of these properties. Is becoming, becoming more and more difficult.
Yeah.
I mean, I looked at one the other day that looked like, the property looked like an hourglass.
Yeah.
And, and so trying to figure out where the front yard was, where the side yards were, where the rear yard was. Our definition calls a rear yard the opposite of the front yard. But the, so if there's a line that crosses in front of the, in front of the front yard setback. Or the front yard, then you end up, you see what I'm saying, that becomes a rear. And then it, and then what if there's another line that also is opposite the front yard?
So I'm just, I'm just gonna say, I'm, I am right now sitting in what is a very typical agricultural aerial area. And I have a street in front of me and I have a side yard on each side and I have. An expectation that these people are gonna monitor that forty feet. Now you're moving to twenty-five, whereas they are put, they were cut into tens and twenties. And I don't know why you're cutting that down because of some exceptions. I think that most of Bonner County is cut into sections that are very clearly defined.
Need to spend some time with the map and number two, it's not personal. It's, we're, we're looking at, you know, forty-three thousand parcels and we're, we're continuing to divide up the county. And, uh, while we might correct some of those things as we continue to divide up the county. There still are lots of existing screwing lots that are resulting in numerous, numerous variances.
Could you tell me the percentage of the likelihood of how many are affected?
Any of them?
Okay, because I see that over the years since nineteen eighty, that things were divided into really rectangular or square parcels. And that's what I see when I look over it, and so I think what you're seeing is really unique exceptions.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that's accurate, but.
Well, the ones, the ones that we see in the variances, uh, for, and, and the definitions of front yard and so forth. For instance, the ones that come to mind, I can think of three of them offhand, where the lot was in a switchback in a road in a subdivision.
So I say bring those, bring those forward, but don't make a rule.
Yeah, don't, don't relax the standard, uh, for side yard.
Right.
Just to dress, um. You know, that, that could certainly be part of the variance for those odd shaped lots, whether they're rectangular or shaped like a banana or an hourglass.
And that's a purpose of a variance.
Yeah.
Well, so again, I, we're talking about two different things. We're talking about a property line setback, so. Um.
I, I think what Suzanne is trying to get across is she likes, uh, the forty-foot setback to be on the egg forestry ten and twenty and forty.
Thank you.
And that's what this is, so if that's what you want.
That's twenty-five.
If that's what you want, make that recommendation, but let's not, let it, let's not lose focus on the front, rear and side setback. Let's change it to property line.
I agree.
Yeah.
The rear yard is forty feet, the side yard is forty feet, so. Fine, let's change it to property line, but let's leave it at forty feet.
Right.
It was three zones, yeah.
But, but Milton, my only comment on that would be, we need, if we're gonna do that, we need to go ahead and maybe it's in here already that you're gonna go ahead and, and take that out. If you're in our R five zone but border an egg forest ten or twenty, that you have to maintain those forty-foot setbacks. If you're in our R five zone, I say we can leave that at twenty-five.
Yeah.
And that's how this goes down here.
Okay.
That's the note, okay. So also, let's see, cause you added note thirteen. Yeah, there's thirteen, okay, so there's.
Well, this is, this is setbacks for agricultural buildings and we left it at forty feet.
Okay. So that's that standard, yeah.
Yeah, the main thing we're trying to address is the, is the definition of front side, we're changing it to property line.
Yeah. Okay.
Milton, have, have you ever ran into the issue of, of the, uh, front yard setbacks being twenty-five feet and the sign setbacks being twenty-five feet?
On the side?
On the, on the front, just the, the, the front yard setback and the sign setback being similar, have you ever?
Right, yeah, the sign has to be setback twenty-five feet, right?
Hmm.
Even for cell signs?
We had a property, we, we had a property last, in the last couple of weeks. So we've been so busy with BLPs that, that I've actually also been looking at them. And we had a property that was fifty feet wide. And the access was, was on the, was on the side. It was addressed on the, on the different you know, was accessed on the front, if you will, but the access was on a road off the side. So we ended up with a twenty-five foot front and rear setback. So the guy but he was gonna put living quarters in his garage, so he took the living quarters out of his garage because he didn't have enough room to, to have a twenty-five foot front and rear yard setback. And so what we'd like to do is maintain the twenty-five foot front yard setback, more importantly than the rear yard setback, because the, because of snow removal and road maintenance and things like that. We, we, we had a variance a few weeks ago where we reduced the front yard to four and a half feet. You've got another one coming where they wanna reduce the front yard to three feet. And so so my hope is, is that if we change this rear yard setback, it helps to move it to the back. And I'll show you what I'm talking about. We're talking about it down here. This, in the smaller lot sizes. So in the suburban zones and the commercial zones. Maybe I don't know what I'm talking about. Oh, right here, minimum property lines. So so in this instance, on these smaller lots, the rear yard setback would now be five feet. Which we would hope would address some of these variances. Plus, it would help us tell property owners, move your house back away from the road, now have room to move it closer to the back line. So it might help with some of these, again, help with some of these variances. If you have, if you have a a code that is creating lots of variances, then there's a problem with the code and you need to update it. And that, that's what we're trying to do. So this one, this is the, I said, this is the suburban commercial industrial world service center wreck in Alpine Village. And so hang on, I know I'm making you dizzy. So the, the Alpine Village, we got a comment from the independent highway district, we're concerned about this being reduced to five feet. It's not, it's still at fifteen. And then, of course, the notes here are the similar to the ones up above. Uh, we did add this sentence, first four porches and decks open and unclosed on three sides and attached to the dwelling unit can project up to eight feet into the street setback.
A part of, a part of the on lot setback is to provide enough length potentially for a driveway leading to the house, so you don't have to park in the right of way.
Correct.
So that particular addition doesn't impinge on that because it's, this wouldn't necessarily be in the driveway. Till they convert the garage to a living room or something, and then they want to put a deck off it. That's thirty years out, so. Just when the kids go back, back from whatever they're doing. My was coming back at forty-two.
So again. So that's the setback section. Now, we're gonna give in definitions, and this is a little more interesting. What we tried to do with the definition section was take advantage of the opportunity to update the definitions that that, for new stuff that we've done and delete some of the ones that we're not using at all. And so accessory dwelling unit is in two places. It's accessory dwelling unit and it's also dwelling unit accessory, and it's two different definitions. So we're getting rid of them. So basement, we're deleting, basement is nowhere used in any of the code. So accessory dwelling unit, a dwelling unit located on the same lot as a single family dwelling, either within the same building as the SFP, that's building. It's listed on the twelve-four ninety. Driveway, private path, we had to have that because of the change to, because of the street definition. The easement, use of a, ready use over the property of another. Again, we did the easement definition because of the street definition. Deleting lot frontage because we won't be using that anymore. Lot size, the area contained within the boundary lines of a lot, including and a definition that we use a lot. Deleting park model because we're adding it to the definition of an RV. We use the term RV very loosely around here. Added the designate or appointee to planning director, added the definition of a property line because we just added that property line definition, any line bounding a lot of parcel. So then recreational vehicle, this definition was talked a lot about with the board. So I know that I'm the voice, but some ideas are not all mine.
Okay, question, Milton, on property line? Just, just realized it, so so that could also include the right of way line, which is the front lot. So does it need to be a distinction to say anything other than the lot frontage or whatever, road frontage line? Or does it already say that in?
In frontage. Under lot. I think if he goes back up, if you scroll back upward just a little bit there, yeah, oh, lot size right there. Boundary lines of a lot, including easements.
Well, that's lot size. But is, okay, cause you've got a, you've got a front yard setback and a lot line setback. So as long as somebody doesn't grab the lot line and say, my front, my front of my lot up against the right of way, that's my lot line. And say, I, I got a five foot setback. There's gonna be a distinction between that. All, let's say you got a rectangular lot, all four lines are lot lines.
Recorded, recorded parcel lines. Well, you can't have, right?
Yeah.
So here, so let's, so then let's just go right into street and see if we address that question. So the definition of street is a travelway accepting driveways and trails, which provide vehicular access to adjacent properties, including the following.
Those are just physical descriptions of various categories. I don't see anything there that cause that doesn't really address the right of way. This is just the uses.
Interesting, cause I know exactly what you're talking about. I can pull you up a picture.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, just think of any, just make up five acre lot, you know, three thirty by six sixty, is that right? The three thirty is along the street, street frontage, that's the right of way line, but that's also their front lot line. You got three other lot lines making up the rest of the box. So I don't want somebody to come in and say, oh, it says here in the code, I get a five foot setback from my lot line. That's this one up here. I don't care if you wanna call it frontage or not, I call it a lot line. So just some distinction, that's all. It still has to have that differentiation between up against an easement or a right of way, that line and its setback, and then the other three or more, or one, or whatever it is, circular.
Well, but see, on the number nine where I'm at here, I'm on page number where'd it go? On page number three, it says from the street as defined in Bonner County code twelve eight nineteen, including any portion of a private easement, providing access to, through or more.
Okay, okay.
So do we define street?
Yeah. But see, it's just, it, it's just it doesn't reference anything about right of way. I mean, written here, it could say relative to a lot, the right of way line is the, the lot line. Uh, but not to be, somehow, again, it has to have that distinction from the other, let's say, three, using that rectangular example. Yeah, the three lot lines, not to be confused with the front line or the easement or right of way line. According to which side you're looking at, if you're on the street, it's a right of way line. If you're on the parcel, it's property line. So we just have to look for some distinction between the two. Well, that'd be nice. Between those front two pins or more. Again, I'm thinking of that, that hairpin turn in that subdivision had sixteen points on it for that.
Somebody else's problem. Surveyor.
Yeah. But if it's a, an adequate parcel, it's just like, again, three thirty by six sixty, thirty feet south of the section line is where your lot is.
You have to try.
Yeah.
We would say, yeah, the line that's the line that makes up that road or easement. I mean, there are gonna be cases where there's a, there's a right of, there's a piece of property between you and that right of way. But I don't know that we would require a twenty-five foot setback against that. Setback against a, a line that is, can be defined as a street, right?
Yeah, yeah. So even there, in the street definition, somehow squeezing in some discussion about the right of way line or the easement line and relative to property. Just so that you don't get somebody coming in claiming they can get a five foot setback from that front line. Cause it's a property line.
That's in the, it's in Spokane County, they say uh, shall include that area which will be bounded by the center line of the rotor street and the side lot lines of the lot.
And so they just, they make that distinction.
The problem with that is you expect all of the roads to be in the middle of the right of way, and they're not.
That one has been proven erroneous time and time again, so.
Well, you could, you could just leave center out of that.
And even then, you know, there's, there's defined rights of way and then there's roads. They don't Gar, uh, Glengarry Bay Road is not in the defined easement, period. It cuts across the lines, cause that's where you could build it. And it never got corrected.
So does this legal access, does this cover that? Recorded, uh, platted street right of way? And then, and then the major collector?
Not really. I don't think so, cause it doesn't, it doesn't connect the two, it doesn't connect, nothing in there talks about setbacks. So if there was something in it that said, the right of way or easement line for a street constitutes the front lot line for a parcel. How about that?
There you go.
I sent you, that's what you said. Even that, that strange one where the, the lot was fifty feet wide, three hundred feet long or something, and the three hundred foot side was the street. That's where a variance would come in, saying, okay, we recognize the fifty foot as the front. I don't know.
Do you have a right of way definition? Put it in there.
There you go.
It could be, this, yeah, I mean, that one comes close to saying maybe recorded easement for ingress and egress, but or planted right of way, a statutory right of way, fifty feet wide, et cetera, et cetera. Blending or, or adding to, sticking that description of a right of way into here relative to something.
I won't add that in.
Yeah, see if you can find something or make something up or that would, that would hopefully end any arguments about five foot setback from a property. And see, line bounding a lot or parcel, that's all four sides, it's rectangular. Any line bounding a lot or parcel. My front yard, I'm sorry, I get a five foot setback. Can't talk me out of it. Oh, lights out, we gotta go home.
Went out again.
Yeah.
Accepting those accepting those lines that are, lines, lines that are adjacent to.
Come on, sensor. I'll take a walk. There we go.
There we go.
Or anything else other than that one?
Hey, Milton, before I forget, on, on your table four dash two, the zoning districts, you struck out the minimum rear yard setback, which references twelve. You might as well get rid of twelve because it's not referenced anywhere else for any other requirements.
Four dash two?
Yeah.
So I need to, I need to undo that thing as well.
Well, see, that, that was the one part that I was I was kind of, I was talking about earlier was that, that's the problem is if you're in a rural five zone and you border an egg ten, you have to, well, we may be leaving it as a forty foot setback perhaps.
Oh, yeah.
But if it's a rural five, you're only required to have twenty-five. And I think.
It did the twenty feet.
Yeah, okay.
Because of, because again, we're having a lot of issues with this up there. And then I'll go up and change these real quick. Try not to get C fix. Watch, you're not as close as I am.
Better run to the, run to the bench.
So are you ready to talk about RVs?
About what? RVs?
Vehicle or portable unit designed to be mounted on chassis and wheels designed for truck to be installed with or without a permanent foundation. Residents not more than eight and a half feet in width. This is so it runs over the road, no more than three hundred and twenty square feet in total Florida. The term RV should only claim but is not limited to child trailers, park models, camping trailers, truck campers, apartment homes, Indian houses. And the board suggested we change the three twenty to nine hundred. We did a ton of research and found that the largest RV, I think I told you this, is twelve hundred square feet.
Yeah.
My house is nine hundred.
Has an upper floor.
I, so, why, why do we need to try to bound it with a max number of square feet?
Because we, you know, we, we have, if it's going to be greater than nine hundred square feet, it becomes the single family dwelling on the property.
Okay.
That, that's the reason. So basically, we would be allowing a regular size as of the, an ADU nine hundred square feet, allowing two dwelling unit RVs of two nine hundred square feet. So what happened is the challenge with the slide outs, the challenge with the, if it's going to be a permanent RV, they may add on deck, you may add on, you know, an extra room or something like that, so. Probably we should change this. Oh, yeah, I've got it.
I just cleared my garden and it's a thousand square feet. You gotta be kidding me.
Yeah.
Holy mackerel. I don't want to see that one come, the same road I'm on. I don't care if it does have slide outs.
Cool. Yep.
Try to get down, it's a good, okay, camp.
Should say floor area, it should say total square foot area. You know, we want them to count the deck and the, all the stuff in the nine hundred square feet. We don't want them to do kind of floor area we define as living space. We want it to be the whole structure, so.
So that would be if we use, say, the golf course and blancher, the outside cooking areas, that would become part of that nine hundred square feet?
Oh, man. Well, so those are lots and that would be their, that would be their rest of the fee, right? Well, if you looked at it totally.
Well, yeah, they're, they're based on, you know, it's the lots are, they're, they're lots, they're hard surfaces. Usually the, there's a slab that the coach parks on. And then next to that, they have outdoor kitchens and uh, bathroom facilities and that such. And to, and, and amenities.
Square feet in total living area? I'm still reading one.
I think we would look at that as a separate structure from the RV. So it wouldn't be the RV and that, because that is not attached to the RV.
Okay, yeah, it's not attached.
Yeah, you can have an eight and a half foot deck.
No problems with that?
Well, you just, are you gonna get that square foot, square feet, square foot?
For a fee area? That?
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Total square feet. Well, I mean, why does it need to say it twice? Nine hundred square feet in a total square feet, a total area?
Oh, my gosh. I don't know why.
Now, if you're an appraiser, you would say total living area.
Square feet in total.
Yeah, total area, total living area, total something area, defined area, but nine hundred square feet.
Total area.
Total area.
Got it. I like that.
There we go.
And so the, the next two definitions, we don't use them anywhere in the code. RV destination, RV overnight. I have no idea why they're in there. Um, street, vacation rental. Uh, we, we needed to change this to match our code because when we adopted the RV ordinance, the dwelling unit RV can be used as a vacation rental. And so by changing it to a dwelling unit that includes all of our definitions, dwelling unit. So a dwelling unit excluding caretakers' residence and farm labor housing ran it up for periods of up to a month.
Typo, we got an extra asset caretakers.
There's many of them. And then, and then finally just deleted all the yard stuff that, that we've, the front, rear side definitions that we got around and deleted the picture. The perfect world picture.
Yeah, I like it.
With the changes that I made and then, and then the one I will add, I'll go back and add the comment that you made. If you'll just add that to your motion, I will change that property line moving forward.
Yeah.
In publishedness as a public hearing, I don't know if there's anybody out there that's interested in communicating on this remote. The rest of my staff report, we did hear from.
Yeah, I mean, there isn't any public to comment.
Right, there's no public still online.
So this is one of the fly-by-night things where we change the code.
No, no, there's two letters, there's one from independent highway district.
One from city of Kootenay.
Oh, of course.
I'm the only ones that respond to our stuff.
Keep Ron the very busy. Yeah.
Looks like we lost Suzanne too.
Oh.
Took too long.
Suzanne, you still there?
She fell asleep.
Well, it's eight o'clock. Usually it's off at eight. It's their hours. Gotta go to sleep. Okay.
So we vote on this tonight or not?
Yeah, this is a, this is a, that was his staff presentation, thank you. So now we're no public, so we're in deliberation. So as was stated, we kind of agreed with all these and the exception is to massage that lot line setback differentiated from front setback or something to do with right of way or easement line. Obviously, standard case.
And were we doing any changes on those, those first comments on that first table four one? Suzanne was mentioning the minimum property line?
Oh.
No, no, changed.
I think.
Oh, okay.
On the fly, so back to forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then what about that Kootenay? City of Kootenay one?
Yeah, the comments from the city of Kootenay, you know, they're concerned about, we're creating high-density setbacks in rural areas and we're just not.
Okay.
We're creating high-density standard urban setbacks or high-density setbacks in high-density areas for high-density.
Okay.
It's a challenge. So, again, my recommendation would be, let's move this forward and let me work out that definition on this property line thing. Accepting, you know, so it accepts the right of way. It really is a good catch. What's the word? Against, adjacent to the street?
Yeah. Trying to get something that's, it is a one-size-fits-all language.
Because what about like utility power line easements?
No, and access. There's a lot of those access easements are also utilities.
Right.
So you don't, you want it to be, use the word.
Well, that's why we use the word street, and then when you go to street, it talks about legal.
Where the, yeah, legal easement, easement and or right of, well, but street, I think street needs to include the, just the, the words right of way. Whether fee or, or prescriptive.
Street or right of way?
Street or? Well, but that's a trouble, street. See, it's, it's streets as a travel way. That's not the right of way. That's just where you drive your car.
Yeah, that's only forty.
Twenty feet on both.
Police access, a public or, so should I change thoroughfare to right of way? A public or recorded private right of way?
Yeah, because there is no such thing as a recorded thoroughfare.
Yeah.
I have a recorded private easement over thoroughfare or private. You gotta define thoroughfare if you're gonna use it.
I'm gonna delete that.
Okay.
Yeah, you got.
But the next sentence, a recorded, private.
Oh, yeah.
And, okay.
Thoroughfare everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah, I just opened up a this pit here.
Find replace.
Yeah, well, the previous paragraph was three times.
Yeah, I just saw it, geez.
Or thoroughfare, thoroughfare.
Come on, deed it right of way.
You got it. Deed it right of way, prescriptive right of way. Prescriptive easements, deed it easements. Court ordered easements. Like we just heard from the other case.
Right. Thoroughfare is not defined in our code.
Nope. Nope.
It's in all the road definitions.
It's probably defined in Webster's, right?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet that it's gonna match what's here.
A street, B street.
Easement or right of way which provides primary access? Do we need thorough, we don't need thoroughfare?
Got out of the closet.
Staring at the screen, got old.
There you go.
A rotor path forming a route between two places.
I don't know if this needs to be, but we're making changes now to that, and maybe that's fine to do, but those weren't advertised, is that all right?
Uh, because it, it gets advertised, so that's why it's important to make the changes and then when we advertise, we advertise the changes.
This is actually.
Changes, then the court wouldn't have to hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Our changes would be advertised before.
So I need to change that throughout, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Carefully look at each one because.
Let's, you wanna do a definition for it?
Well, yeah.
What I do, I think I agree that.
See, that, that relies on the thoroughfare. A thoroughfare may be either recorded easement or, so, I don't know, you have to look at each one and see if it's a keyword in the sentence or it's just a descriptor.
Got it.
I know the whole thing was to not try to use, try not to use the word road. But it's all, that's the other thing. Typically, in the county, they're called roads. In the city, they're called streets.
The county used to call them highways.
Yeah, right. You look up in the old records and many, most of the old roads are called highways.
So you're saying it doesn't matter much what we call it at all?
What's in a name? What's in a name?
Might have been easier just to define thoroughfare.
Yeah, like you read it.
Leave it in there.
Well, the problem is that the thoroughfare didn't, it didn't define again the width of the easement, right?
No, it's, it's gotta go beyond the travel way.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'm getting rid of street and calling roads. Shorter. Yeah. You could save all those electrons.
Yep.
Local road would make sense.
Just add that to your motion and I will change it.
Are you writing, Brad, so you can?
No, I'm not.
Donald, let me know whenever you wanna hear a motion.
All right, so I guess we're, we've got enough discussion here. And we made changes on the fly. So, all right, yeah, we could go with the motion.
All right, this is Commissioner Kempton. I move to recommend approval of this file AM zero 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 five dash two zero to the Board of County Commissioners, amending the sections of Title Twelve, Bonner County Revised Code as presented and then further amended in this hearing based upon the evidence submitted up to the time staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. Still changes to be made on definition of thoroughfare to incorporate right of way when addressing boundary or property lines. This section is not resulting in taking a private property.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and file AM zero 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 five dash twenty code amendments to recommend approval. Is there a second? I'll sing of that. All right, motion in a second on the, motion in a second on the floor, any further discussion? So that, the amended language refers back to all wrapped around the property line and frontage description. And then dealing with this word thoroughfare, if that fits or doesn't. Okay? Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Five presidents say aye, we have one missing. Suzanne is not online anymore, so the motion carries. What? Okay, so that concludes our public hearing tonight at eight nineteen PM. And we're now in open line discussion. Milton, you gonna come down and join us or you gonna stay up there in your cloister?
I think, hey, okay, let's see.
If you want to.
Can we go to winner?
It's only eight o'clock, so the sun is still shining on city beach, so.
The sunshine that shines in that window on that cabinet is gone. It's behind the clouds or behind the mouse or something. Yeah, the clouds are rolling in, that's for sure.
Here we go.
There.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So those are VLPs. This is this week. Twenty seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got thoroughfare.
We seen thoroughfare.
Oh, man. Why doesn't this computer do what I want it to?
Because it's a computer. Yeah, it does exactly what you tell it to. It does exactly what you tell it to.
These are building location permits. This is this week. Last week. A week before, a week before, a week before, a week before. Where's mine, Jenny?
Well, you know, it is summertime tomorrow.
Yeah, no, I'm just showing you that's how busy we are.
Yeah, good.
This is a, some of these will go out pretty fast. Because they've been approved by GIS. Others will take a little longer.
So good, that's the I like the use column there. Accessory Building Ag Edition, manufactured home.
Oh, that's my son's. My name.
So Sloan.
That's right, I'm first Dean of Trump. That's right. So quite a few single family dwellings.
Yes.
Out of those. Yep.
So which has. So did that screen change?
Now we're back to Google.
Okay, so it is changed. So it is good.
Yeah, you see that you like Facebook and Fox News.
Yeah, something like that. Gotta keep track of where the news is.
There you go.
So the AM files, we got a couple coming to you, six, seven, and eight. Couple more conditional use permits. And then we variances, we're bringing you nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Two, three, four, and thirteen on July sixteenth. Lots of variances. And then a few zone changes. What I'm not showing you is the number of MLDs were at forty two. Took in, we were at number thirty last week and we're now at forty two. So lots of minor land divisions. One of the things that's happening with our land divisions is folks are dividing properties into, you know, sixty acres into three twenties. And then they bring in three MLDs. So I'm talking to the board about that. We've been talking to the board about how how do we at least address the standards, right, that that we're concerned about? And so what we're talking about is considering a a. Uh, we're talking about considering a standard that says that if you if you have contiguous MLDs, you have to address the road standard. To make sure that we get the roads aligned and make sure that we get the roads developed to the proper standard, you know, for what's going on out there. So the. So you probably see an ordinance change about that shortly. Also been, we've also been tasked with considering a change to the ordinance regarding gravel pits. I've been doing a lot of research on that and if I found some language that that the attorney's office likes. I think he might be the only one that likes it. So I'm not sure how far we're gonna proceed with the with the gravel pit thing, but there's just so many gravel pits in this county that that, you know, they've obviously expanded and they've grown and they're there's probably new ones starting up that we don't even know about. There's private ones. So so we're gonna, we're gonna take a run at addressing gravel pits generally in our code. So you'll probably see that one before the end of the year. Um, finally, let's talk about sub area plans quickly before everybody gets burnt out. So sub area plan. So I really appreciate that Don came in for a therapy session with the planning department this week. Kind of kind of brought us back to their life and let us vent and and it was it was a really good meeting. It gave us a chance to, you know, regroup and rethink where we are. And I was pleased with the outcome and appreciate the opportunity to do that because if you couldn't tell, we were getting a little burnt out.
Yeah.
Yep.
So you want to go over that or?
Well, go ahead.
So one of the things we talked about, I don't know, two months ago, was getting the chairs of the committees together to give them a booster shot uh, for a couple of things. One, keep it moving, keep it on task. Uh, as the chair or vice chair, who's ever sitting there that day, really reining in the committee to stay on task. You know, this is, they only meet once a month.
Yep.
So we were meeting for three years. Well, that's that's thirty to thirty six meetings. That's not meeting every week. There's timed gaps. There's all kinds of reasons to go on rapid trails, but they've really got to keep it down. And then coming off of the now history of Selly. The chair probably could have taken care of some of the drifting and some of the the grandstanding that occurred and stopped it. But nobody wants to be the bad guy and all that stuff. So that's part of the message. The other one, we've got to decide as the commission how we want to see this thing come to an end. It's in the past, we've talked about having each committee bet their work in front of their neighbors as the proponent of the work, not the commission, but have a commission run meeting with the neighbors and all that stuff. So I've been thinking a lot about that and there's pros and cons of doing that versus just having the committees come in here and present it at a public workshop forum where the public's invited. Obviously, something in the neighborhood, you're more likely to get people involved there, whether they know about it or not. Put it out online a good ahead of time, give advertisements, get a place set up, which is what Sully was gonna do with Northside, but it couldn't happen because of the virus. Uh, and the committees are the ones that are done, are tired of it. They don't want it to occur anymore. But we got to decide how are how is that committee going to finish out their work? Are they gonna have neighborhood meetings? Are they just gonna bring it to us and we'll hold that meeting that's gonna invite the public and so forth? Obviously, if it's a neighborhood meeting and the commission, whether it's some of us, first off, if five or more of us are there, it's a quorum and it's an official meeting. If four are there or one or two or three or four are there, it's not. Uh, commission, we'll talk about that in a minute, but so commission, open the meeting, conduct the meeting in that sense, but the presenter is the committee. And comments taken are directed to the committee because it's not at this point a proposal by the planning commission to, it's a, it's a essentially an applicant making a plan amendment proposal. So they'll present it and again, they'll present it later to us if that's the scenario. I'm leaning towards that still just because it's that first vetting with their neighbors who they've all stated are totally in agreement with what they've done. And let's put that to the test.
Well, and that's my only concern is if they do have that, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
That's one of my concerns. Like you said, you know, they talked to all their neighbors and this is all they want. Those neighbors, the only ones they're gonna spread the word to to come to meetings. I mean, how how else are how else are some of these people who are actually gonna be?
I don't know. Standard, standard action. We put it in the paper. We put it on the website. Put the document up there. Facebook, you know, get it out there as best we can. I don't know any other way. Sure to knock on the doors and pass out leaflets at that, you know, at Samills and but that could be too. Put stuff up at Samills, put stuff up at Paco, and put stuff.
Put a reader board up, run a reader board for a week or two weeks.
Come to the public meeting, da, 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 da. So that's one scenario is through that. That's one advantage I see is it 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 steps it. They get an introduction to it. If it's the very first time they've heard about it, they're gonna see it in their neighborhood. Coming here, this is a foreign country to a lot of them, whether they're from Selly or Priest Lake or Blanchard. This is kind of a foreign world. So that's got a disadvantage to them. I'd like to see the public in their own setting either get mad or get happy and direct it to the committee. And I'll do, if if I'm running the meeting, I do everything I could to say, you address the committee. You're not addressing the planning commission per se. You're addressing the committee who came up with this and and their work. Flip that around or the other, the detriment to that is time. It's gonna take time and resources to set it up, logistics, when, who, what, all those questions need to be answered on that. And it's a delay in the action to get it to here, to get it to the commissioners. We're not bound by any time constraint, really. We just want to be done with it.
So. Well, you do have a restraint is you have a magical number in two thousand and twenty two for the comprehensive plan?
How do you mean?
I don't know what you're talking about. Isn't there, isn't there a date line that the comprehensive plan has to be updated? As regularly.
Yeah, it doesn't really specify a period, ten, twenty years or anything. And and the present complaint doesn't say this must be updated by twenty twenty.
Okay.
Good idea, and it is state recommendation that it gets periodic update.
So if you don't have a hard date there, then you do have time to have the open forum meetings, same thing. So. Get to school and and get in there in August, we might be able to pull that off this, you know, before school starts and before the next flu season starts.
Yeah, yeah, et cetera, et cetera, before voting or whatever. So that's the first scenario. Like I said, put it out there first. After that, I'd still say give the committee an opportunity to amend what they've done. If they hear something that goes, whoa, you guys are way off base and we're gonna let you if you don't change this. Better change you guys. You don't want to get hung because of this. If they say forget it, it's good the way it is, then so be it. They'll present it to us that way. The question I've got there is, okay, we're holding a public workshop out in the neighborhoods. We'll record it, correct? So therefore it'd be, uh, I don't know, for the public, either a subsequent workshop here with the commission and the public and the presenters. That's the next step. Whether or not, because it's recorded, you could watch the video or listen to it from that session at Northside or Sagel or wherever it was. It's not part of the record personally. I don't know if it is or not.
It's public.
Yeah.
P and Z hearing and we would be, we would probably be able to stream it out there like we are right now. So we.
Oh, out there, right, for the hearing. I'm just saying the recorded session from Northside or wherever just as their presentation to the public, we could record that so that commissioners not or anybody can review it later leading into the public hearing, because it'd be nice again to hear what those people said. You know, even here, as we've discussed or or going to the selling meetings, everybody refers back to the whatever it was November two thousand sixteen meetings out at Northside School. Well, I wasn't there. I didn't hear those. I haven't listened to a recording of that. So I'd like to make that kind of stuff available if that's the scenario we choose to go with. So, you know, good information that that is gonna reveal what the people were thinking. So that scenario one, scenario two is just to go ahead and have the committees come in here and present it at a workshop with us, advertise, get people in here to this foreign country and have them speak their piece here. Shorter timeframe. Essentially the same result. But I think the feeling of it would be totally different. So obviously I'm leaning towards the the former. The latter could be done. I don't think you'd get as much public participation if it was just here.
Don't you think the public, that area, any of the area would be more receptive to have it in their neighborhood and?
And I guess, so I'm thinking, okay, if we did that, the planning and zoning commission would open the meeting, have the presentation, have the comments, go to the presenters and then make some statement at the end. What's gonna happen next? So that remains to be seen. I don't know if that's an off the cuff thing, response to it all that night, or we'd have to have some sort of prepared statement to make at the end to say, here's the path forward, both to the the applicant, the committee and to the public, because they they need to know. They can't, we just can't leave the room and say, see you later. So we'll have to work on that if that's the case, if that's the way we go with the neighborhood meetings.
If you do, if you do it that way, by the time we get here, our workshop will be much more productive, I think, because if we just start with the pitchforks here, then I don't think we would.
You'll weed them out, you'll weed those pitchforks out.
I mean, if it's if it's done here, them presenting and everything, the public are still gonna say, you're doing this to us or or this is your work. And we need to say, no, it's not. No, it's not yet. We haven't decided that this is work that we adopt. We're here to find out if it's worthy of adoption. So let's, I still suggest vetting it to the public out there in the neighborhoods.
So so either way, whether it's gonna be there or here, it's gonna be a public workshop. Is that working all night or no?
Yeah. Now, well, the way Milton had the original Northside setup was they they had paper goods that were a couple of different stations. There's a lot of people there, Milton addressed the crowd. And, you know, people you know, really didn't have a good idea what was going on. So there was a lot of confusion. However, if that kind of an agenda, how things are going is posted, people might have a little bit better.
Yeah, I would.
Idea and a flyer when they come in. People like a piece of paper to look at what's going on.
So we have to go through the the setup of it. But yes, I would think based on, and and obviously staff can facilitate the committee's presentation by putting their words on placards, putting up the land use map, so forth, as their proposal.
Yeah, they had staff, had stations is how they had it set up.
So the format of the.
Presenter for each.
Format of the meeting, open house style startup and at a certain time, you know, open the doors at five and at six o'clock, there's gonna be a presentation. Something like that. That's a very standard format for those kind of meetings. Whether or not it can be a planning and zoning workshop, if the pole commission isn't gonna be there, I don't know. And if it comes to that.
Well, if you don't have to vote on anything, then you don't have to have a quorum. So then it is okay.
It could still be labeled as a Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission workshop. It could still be labeled as a Bonner County Planning and Zoning Commission workshop. Just because that's what it is, and, and I'd explain to the public where all this came from, out of state code, provision, and the requirement, and the duties, and all that. And that, that's why we're here, and hopefully do that in five minutes, not sixty-five minutes. How's that sound? So, the next. The next thing is to have the meeting with the chairs and hopefully co-chairs. It, it can be, I think it might be a, a bit of a hard conversation, but it's gotta be, gotta lay it out to these guys, you know, what they're, what they signed up for, and how they gotta bring it home. Hopefully, they all participate, and I think, we've talked about it, it would be good to have them all together to do it rather than individually. So.
That means a.
Okay. Did I forget anything?
No, no, it was good.
All right, so is, do we wanna, do we wanna, I don't know, vote on that or just? What do we think? First, second rounds, or just here?
First, second rounds.
Yeah, my first second rounds.
We got two, we got three.
Yeah, we need to let them get butchered out there, are concerned.
Okay. So, uh, whenever we can quiz the, the co-chairs and chairs and see what kind of timeframe they've got, I mean, some of these guys are working during the day, so it probably is gonna be a late afternoon or evening meeting with the chairs. And then we'd have to get together first and lay out exactly what we wanna tell these guys.
Okay, so we'll start to set that up, it'll be an interim meeting, it'll be between our regular meetings.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's gonna be a little confusing, cause you've got ongoing meetings, committee meetings, everything but selling.
Well, so, and then. Don't they only have one more meeting, then they're gonna recess through?
Oh yeah, that's right, too.
Yep, yeah, we are, we're shutting them down for July.
Yeah. So it might be.
If that's the case, you can have it anytime in the summer.
Well, it could be, yeah, I'd wanna keep the momentum up. Well, think about that, you know, the, the appropriate time to have a meeting with the chairs, whether it's before everything shuts down or shortly before it picks up again.
Well, so, maybe I should restate that, we, we did shut, Priest Lake is done until October.
October.
Blanchard may continue because they are so, so close. They're, they're gonna take the next meeting, maybe the next two meetings, and go through their draft document and finalize it. So they may continue to meet, just because they're, they're almost done, and we won't send out all the staff we've been sending out. We'll, we'll send out one or two of them. So, so they can have time to, they wanna sit down and edit their draft, and so that's how close they are. Sagel, we're gonna bring them in here and meet with them next week, and, uh, we'll see, we'll see how close they are to, to being finished. So Sagel and Blanchard, we may, we may keep meeting with them because of that. Priest, we've let them know we're gonna, we're gonna stop for a couple of months.
So is, is Sagel here in the building, or is it gonna be down there in EMS, or in online? So it's gonna be here, but still with the online option, okay?
Okay, which one that, is that?
Sagel, that's next Thursday.
Or they're not at the B, Bonner County EMS?
Oh, yeah, that's why I was.
They didn't notice that in the, in the, uh, agenda.
Oh, that's not on the agenda?
Because it's still just webinar. We told the committee they can come here if they want to, cause.
Okay, all right.
Some of them are having difficulty with computer stuff.
I feel their pain. I feel their pain.
Well, you know, one of those meetings I watched, I can't remember which one it was, but I was watching on the YouTube, but it has my cell phone called in, and there's a delay from what I'm hearing, I mean, it, it was like five or six seconds.
Hear yourself talk.
And so, and so someone says, any other comment? Okay, good, and then moved, I was like, no. You don't, you couldn't if you wanted to.
What's the whole part movies, man?
Lip sync isn't quite in tune.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Log in on their computers, it works pretty good.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Hey. All right, gavel is coming down at 8:45 PM, adjourned until the twenty, uh, sixteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteenth of June.
Five times plus four is eighteen. Too late. Too late at night to be doing that higher ban.
Higher ban.